Two thousand twenty-five, we are being recorded and maybe broadcast in the will be broadcast on Mr. Cat. Begin with open forum, anybody in the board having a vote in the forum?
No.
Staff?
Just to say I did watch the recording last week's.
Great, thank you. The audience, open forum. All right, jumping right into our first public hearing, PB two five oh five, thirty-seven Powers Road. Upset?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may recall, at the last meeting, the board did review draft decisions for consideration. There were a number of comments received by the board at the last meeting. It was a lot of back and forth, I'll say, between the town and the applicant's team. We do have a couple of minor things to point out tonight that we believe are non-substantive. I will also say, we did have preliminary review from town council. They're going to put a few minor comments in writing. They are truly not substantive. Give a brief overview of some of them later to show how not significant they are for the decision. And so, I do want to point out that Darren did fill out the required Mullen form, so we do have that. So he is eligible to vote at tonight's meeting. And I don't know if where you'd like to go from here, if you want input from the applicant, or the few items that we'd like to further tweak in the decisions tonight.
You want to just go over the few items?
Sure, a few of them really relate to, as you recall, there's the chart of what the applicant is proposing to provide, to show some of the public benefit. Most of those items were explicitly captured as conditions of approval. There was one item, the hundred ninety thousand, that was not called out explicitly as a condition of approval. We'd like to correct that oversight. The applicant pointed out, our town council would like to just make it clear. The other thing is, there were some inconsistencies as far as the timing of when some of the monies would be provided. Rather than having different timing events, the applicant agreed to move those just up to building permit instead of C of O initial or last, so it's actually coming sooner to the town. So in making those decisions consistent, I think there was a double comma in one location. There's also one question about counting the waivers. Again, I don't think that's significant. All the waivers that potentially the board may grant are called out, but there was one added later, so instead of maybe seven, there's actually now eight, so there's a place where we're changing just the numbers there. Town council would also like to adjust some of the language in the narrative, talking about some of the existing structures. It strongly suggested that they might be pre-existing, non-conforming. Council feels that if this project doesn't go forward, you know, there shouldn't be that out there. It's really up, the burden is up to the property owner, the applicant, to assert that status. And so, they would like to just use words like "may" instead of how it's been called out. So, things like that, minor formatting. They didn't have any issues with it. We asked them, if there were any significant issues, let us know. They didn't have any, so that's where we're at, and I can turn it over to the applicant, if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Chair, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins. Like Jeff said, we had no changes, significant changes whatsoever to the decision. At the last meeting, we had offered to pay some of that mitigation upfront instead of building permit, at building permit time instead of occupancy permit time, so we just need to pick that up. I think it's accurate in the chart, just have to change it in the condition. We were satisfied with all the consultant's added comments. We were satisfied with TEC, Tyon Bond, and Dylan's comments, so they are all incorporated in the decisions that are before you today. We did update all of the plan sets to reflect the most current conditions, so you have new architecture, new landscape, new civil drawings that reflect everything that we said we would do. So those are in record, we submitted them last week. We're happy to answer any questions you have, but we have no substantive comments whatsoever to the conditions that are in your packet.
Great. Now go to the board. Bob, any comments, questions?
First, very positive one, as I went through, I think, eighteen or so items I had raised last week, and have confirmed that they all have now been reflected in the language. One minor thing I noted was page fourteen of eighteen regarding the traffic safety monitoring. And I'm just wondering if we could work on getting those ordered, kind of in the progression they go down Littleton Road, because I noticed we can, they jump around a little bit. I noticed we had one at the bottom, Littleton Road at Boston Road. So just kind of looking at how we group those. I would flip Littleton Road at Bell of Westford with the one at, I'm jack, actually, that one is, I guess, good. It's, I would bring up Littleton Road at Boston Road and bring it up underneath Littleton Road at Powers Road, just to make it clear. So we kind of have a strip of monitoring down Littleton Road, then we have a strip going down Powers Road. So it's just very minor, just make it easier to read, but otherwise, it looks good. And I do appreciate the table, we got the cost, and we now have to call value, and the cells have been filled in with a description of the values and things that weren't monetary in nature, so that was good. That's it.
Great, Joey?
Likewise, I did go through all my comments, and all my comments were incorporated, so thank you so much. I do have one question on, I do see that there are elevations electronically. I know we didn't get a chance to get hard copy sets, so I just would ask that if we could get hard copies at some point.
Yep, that's a requirement for, to be referenced for us to, in the decision, so we have electronically, but we'll have those.
Thank you.
No, I got a good name, I didn't have any recommended changes.
Darren?
Staff did a nice job of memorializing the many conversations we've had here.
All right, go to the audience. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Diane Wood, one twenty-two depot. I did not read the two-hundred-page packet, forgive me. But the last meeting I attended, there was discussion about getting an updated artist rendering of what this was going to look like, because it's changed, it's evolved, et cetera. Did we, is that in the packet? Did we get that?
We did get it.
Okay.
Not sure if it's included in this packet. Joey, you have something you can show that we had before?
Last week.
Thank you, that's, that was it.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it was included in the packet for the fall, the week prior, last Monday. I think it's the three-D rendering, not this render, this is the elevation.
Say that again.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think she's looking for the three-D rendering from Powers, not the elevations that were included in the packet, because this has been in the architectural drawings.
I think as well as the three-D rendering prior to the, the meeting prior to that, that showed, looking down the boulevard.
Yes. But the answer's yes. It's in the packet.
No, no. While we're waiting for that, you know, the questions from the audience? Thoughts, comments? Dylan, the consultant, do you have anything you want to add?
That's it. On that, is it?
Yep, that's it.
Joe, you had another one that was marked up with roughly where the buildings should be visible but aren't. It kind of showed where their outline was.
Sometimes it's still tough to tell from the naming convention.
Let's give our consultants a second there.
I have a hard copy. I have a hard copy.
I mean, if you want to, that's fine.
I don't mind dispersing. I have an extra hard copy, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, it is.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I haven't muted myself, so I didn't get interference from the livestream, so throw in some background stuff there for the record. I do not have any comments on the draft decision or plans which largely conform to what I've seen previously.
Great. Thank you. All right, so I think we're done with the decision. We've no more public comment. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Someone else? Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Do you have any motion, do you want for each decision?
So it's, it's fine if you take one vote, we would just ask that, you know, if you grant the approvals, make reference to the draft decisions tonight, but allow, you know, further non-substantive revisions as recommended by town council.
Okay, so the motion to approve PB two five zero five, we have a site plan review under the MCM, we have a special permit, we have a stormwater management permit as the draft decisions are written tonight with the possibility of non-substantive changes made by suggestions from town council. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Nice job.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Moving on, we have PB two five three two, sign permit for one-thirty Littleton Road. Joe?
Joe has this one, sir. Sure. So just to give you a quick overview, Mr. Chair, this was a project that was approved a few years ago. The church is now constructed, so now they're looking to put a sign up north to show their location. I think they generally found due to some topography and some existing conditions out there, they'd like the sign closer towards the road versus the twenty feet that's required in bylaw. Chair, the applicant can give a little more detail, but that's kind of the long and short of it. The view's down Littleton Road, and some of the existing vegetation kind of blocked where it would be otherwise if it was set back twenty feet.
Great. Sir, you have anything to add?
No, I think that was summarized well, so it accurately, so just very, I think you'll look at the picture there, and it really is consistent with the character of the property and of the building, so the lower left there is a rendition of where, of what the sign looks like and kind of what it would look like, and the justification really is several things, I think. One, if you go, maybe Joe, a couple more? Yeah, right there on the previous one. So if we did support the actual twenty feet, I mean, it just wouldn't be visible from the road. And on top of that, even though it is a church there, I mean, we intentionally call ourselves the orchard, so it will be open to other events, to, to the town and others, and so viewing the sign is going to be critical. It's not just going to be a, you know, a token, so having that visible in, in the area that we're recommending will actually, we think, prevent, you know, safety concerns with people slowing down and breaking just to view the sign.
And to impact any more vegetation out there than would be going back.
I think there's a sign hanging there now, is there? Like a more rent sign or something, or is it the other side?
In that location, there was, we did have approval for a temporary sign for a grand opening. Yeah, but it's, and so it's a, it's a slightly smaller sign, but the square area is about the same.
Bob, any questions?
There's a few things I'd like to see on the plan. Overall, I'm fine, but I think it's important to show the position of the sign relative to the stop line coming out. The biggest concern I have about such a sign is affecting the sightline distance. That's a tough road to come out on, and while I believe from what they're showing us that the sign is far enough back.
Yeah.
It's not guaranteed, I, you know.
Yeah, there.
Back to that slide, Joe, you just had?
Oh, there it is, right there. That one shows it.
Yeah, there was another one.
There were some other ones that didn't show it, it was, so I think it's.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, but I think if we can pull up the right photo, Joe. Do you have the latest one that I sent earlier? It actually shows some photos? Because even with the temporary sign there, there was absolutely sufficient space to be able to approach the, the stop sign, and so, so that's, yeah, so if you look.
Well, I believe that's the case. I think we still like to see it in our documentation that's on file.
And just be able to put that.
It needs to be documented as to what the condition was relative to that stop line. The only other concern, question I kind of have is, it would have, there's another property kind of adjacent to the same driveway.
Correct.
That's another property, I think it's the power property.
Correct.
On the plan.
Right.
And my only concern is, you know, does this mean we're going to have two signs in pretty close proximity either side of that driveway? I didn't know if you had tried to work with them.
We actually.
See if we could get a common sign.
We did talk, well, we did talk to them and notify them that this sign in of the location, and they didn't actually have any concerns with that, so they're at least aware of the sign location.
My only concern is that we're going to have another sign request at some point in the future, as opposed to having like a unified sign on the same driveway.
Yeah, and I think first, it would be, look, typically, it's going to be on the opposite side, right?
It would have to be, that's where his property is.
Right. How do we?
I don't know, I just, I mean, just.
Because, yeah.
On the record, that's my concern for the future.
That project is still a little ways out.
Yeah.
So, one issue with that is then they might be dealing then with an on-premise sign which might require additional permissions, not just property owner, we'd have to.
Right.
See, under zoning, you know, it's one thing, it's on their property now, proposed, but if they're putting on somebody else's property, now it's a different category of sign.
So, I mean, I know it's out of your control, that's my only concern is.
Understand.
Too many signs in short space. And just making sure, I like towns, they have to make sure that we have engineering review this for the sightline, the sight distance. Joey, that's it.
My only concern was similar to Bob's, I actually went out there, and, you know, I assume based on the way it looked, that the final sign is pretty much where the temporary sign was.
Correct. The center line, yes.
Yeah.
It's just slightly wider, but still with, still at that four and a third foot distance from the law line.
Okay, perfect, so I, like I said, I was concerned about sightlines, I went out there, and I, I had no issues. So, question though, is that tree going to be pruned back a little? Because that looks like it could be a problem. I know you mentioned it in, in the package, too.
We can, I don't know that that's on our property.
That's the hatch.
So it's not on our property, so that's why we haven't touched it thus far.
Okay, okay. Understood, not a problem. Okay, no, that was it.
Dylan?
I have the same question, sightline.
Darren?
Likewise, now we're just saying for staff to keep that in mind, is the other side of the road comes up with a quote sign, just kind of looking at, at, well, sight distance from both sides, incorporate both sides.
Do we want to vote on this contingent upon Mr. Darren's office looking at the sightline of the distance, the location?
So, one thought about that is, this should be Mast dot right of way, so while we certainly place a great deal of importance on the opinion of the engineering department, ultimately, I think it'll be a question for Mast dot, if they have an issue with signage, well, it will get resolved, but, you know, and I don't know if you're amending, you already have your access permit from Mast dot. So, I don't know if you planned on sending us to them or not, just to make them aware of it. Maybe it'd be helpful if the condition of approval could be send these plans showing the proposed sign to Mast dot, who's already issued your access permit. I'd hate to put engineering department in the position of, you know.
Yep. This is a public hearing, anybody from the audience have any thoughts, questions, comments? All right, so do you want to close the public hearing? A vote to, well, how you want to vote, if it's approved contingent upon order or condition, a condition that it is sent to Mast dot?
I don't think we waive the reading of the public hearing.
You could.
I'll move that we waive the reading.
Before you go on, I have one other question, just one question. Any lighting associated with this?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, continue, Dylan.
I move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB twenty-five thirty-two, sign at one-thirty Littleton Road.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, since, we, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And can I get a motion, we approve the application for the special permit with a condition that notice is sent to Mast dot? Some.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And was there also a request to add the, the distance to this?
Not the distance, to just show the, the stop line on each of the diagrams.
Very good.
Need to indicate where it is, so that it indicates the sign is not a sight impediment.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to PB two five two six, amendment to section three point three, accessory dwelling units. This is a continued public hearing.
Mr. Chair, it's some minor changes to this here, we thank you for leaving the hearing open to do that. One was to capture, I think, the concern about the number of buildings, so we added the word "principal" in the front. As you'll see in the edits that come up on this screen. Additionally, it was addressing the parking and wording for local ADUs versus protected ADUs in terms of the parking requirement. As you see here, adding the word "principal" for buildings in the purpose section. So then with the parking requirements, so we would have not more than one for protected use ADUs, that's the requirement under the new state regulations, and then we kind of reverse that, a minimum of one for a local ADU. And that's reflected, again, will be the modification to appendix D. Those footnotes.
And just, there is a "may" there, so an additional one may be required, so I think there was a comment previously, like, what if they already have adequate parking? So, it has the option.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions, comments? What is the comment that you're adding there?
Hi there.
Hi, I'm going to be unsettling. I first want to thank Mr. Mark, that he's informed me of a lot of things to do with this ADU, and I'm just trying to understand it better, so excuse me if there are questions that I probably should know. So I guess my first question is, do local ADUs have limits based on the current dwelling?
Some limits, so we don't have any percentage requirements, like under the state. Right now, what's proposed is a maximum of twelve-hundred-fifty square feet. However, it does say it can't exceed, say you have a very modest sized principal dwelling, it cannot exceed that square footage. So if someone has, say, an eight-hundred-square-foot dwelling, which is possible, I don't believe your ADU can exceed the eight-hundred square feet.
The local one?
For the local. It's possible, though, someone could propose to say, if they build something larger, what was once the principal could potentially become the accessory to the new, new principal construction. But there is that one limit, that it can't exceed the principal.
What if there is no dwelling currently on a parcel?
So I believe the accessory dwelling unit, it does speak to a principal dwelling unit on the lot. The only instance I'm aware of in town where that hasn't happened, someone secured variance relief to do that, so that's breaking the zoning bylaw, not working with through a special permit.
Okay. And there's a commercial recreation overlay district that has several large parcels on it.
Correct.
Can they only have one local ADU on it that has multiple acres? And what happens if they subdivide? Can that all of a sudden have multiple local ADUs and et cetera?
So, if I may.
Yeah, please.
So I think we would have to look to the terms of the zoning bylaw that relate to the commercial recreation overlay district. I know there are some leniencies through the grant of a special permit that the planning board may consider on a case-by-case basis. A lot of land in the commercial rec- overlay district is residentially zoned, it could potentially be subdivided into a large residential subdivision, that is theoretically possible. I'm not sure that it is likely, but it is a possibility, and for any single-family residential lot that's in a residentially zoned district, they could potentially have accessory dwellings to a principal dwelling unit.
Mr. Chair, can we pull up the zoning map, so I can just ask a question relating to the commercial recreation overlay? Because I believe down by, down by, between Littleton Road and Powers Road, there's the blue, which is commercial highway, but that's also, I believe, part of the commercial recreation overlay district, is that correct?
Yeah.
So which, does the commercial recreation overlay supersede the fact that it's commercial highway? Because commercial highway can't have ADUs.
So, the commercial recreation overlay district doesn't supersede, it merely gives another option that a property owner doesn't necessarily have to take advantage of, it just gives an added possibility to the underlying zone.
So that, this actually is not showing where that commercial recreation overlay district is, but, so that whole area that's a commercial recreation overlay district can have, be subdivided, each of those parcels could be subdivided, and each of them could have a local ADU as well as a, what's the other word, protected ADU?
So it is possible for where it is RA zoning there in the commercial recreation overlay district, if one were to subdivide it, and you had single-family residential lots, they could build a single-family dwelling and potentially have a protected use ADU, we can't take away that right, so long as they can satisfy all the necessary permitting requirements for like Title V and wetlands, which there are some. And then, there's still the possibility for a local ADU, that the zoning board would not be obligated to, this is assuming this bylaw passes, that the zoning board would not be obligated to grant.
Okay, and in the commercial highway, do they have that same right to subdivide and do a local ADU and a protected ADU?
So the protected use ADU is only allowed in those residential districts that allow single-family, so that would be the RA and RB zoning districts. So in my opinion, the protected use ADU would not be eligible in the commercial highway zoning district.
And can the commercial highway district have a local ADU?
Potentially, if this, if the series of amendments pass, I'd have to check the zoning bylaw, if there is a single-family dwelling in the commercial highway zoning district, we know there are a couple of those, that potentially could happen.
So they could subdivide it, that commercial highway, and have single dwellings, and then add on the ADU?
The few parcels that I'm aware of that have single-family homes in the commercial highway zoning district, I don't believe those lots are large enough to be subdivided.
So, but how about a commercial highway district that has nothing on it currently? Could it be subdivided and have a single residential family unit put on it, and then an ADU added?
So, if we're talking about new lots, new construction, single-family dwellings are not allowed in the commercial highway zoning district.
Okay, all right. And then, I just want to make sure I understand, I understand the right to build, so if I have an eighteen-hundred-square-foot house, and I can meet all the setbacks, and my septic can handle whatever, I can add a protected ADU by right of nine hundred, up to nine-hundred square feet, correct? And I can add a local ADU getting permits of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, is that correct? So my eighteen-hundred-square-foot house can now have an additional twenty-one thousand, two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty square feet added to it with special permits?
That is technically possible. I will say, for most single-family residential lots, it seems unlikely for the ones that we have, you know, frequently seen, that they have the capacity to fit both the structures and that new septic system construction, because it would be considered new construction, however, that is possible. I will say, though, that the zoning board does have discretion to not grant special permits for the local ADUs.
Okay, and then lastly, do ADUs, either local or protected, have to have their own water line and own power, or can it be hooked to the current dwelling that's there?
So that, I think, is up to the current policy of the water department. My limited understanding is they don't necessarily have to have everything separate, and for power, I'm not going to speak to electrical. I think, I don't have a clear answer for you, so I don't want to offer a comment on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did I go to the board, Bob? Any questions?
No, no more.
Joey?
No, I'm good, thanks.
No, I'm good thanks.
Darren?
I'm good thanks.
All right, so, can I get a motion to close the public hearing on PB 2526?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out, for this public hearing, that Darren also signed a null and form for this, thank you.
I'll move to the close of the public hearing on PB 2526.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to recommend.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the language for the zoning amendment here in PB 2526 for the special town meeting, I believe on the 27th of October.
Great, so, this motion to, we need to approve this report recommendation, or just?
That would be great.
I'll second Bob's motion.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have PB 2523, tiered site plan review.
Mr. Chair, so it's similar to the last one, there were some minor changes that were requested. One is to change re-stating to reconfiguring, triggering an administrative site plan review. And then otherwise, it was to remove the provision about the planning board being the special permit granting authority in all cases where there was a site plan review required, or also a special permit review required, so we removed that provision to refine with coming from the request from the zoning board. So, those are the only changes to the language, otherwise we haven't received any other comments to our office. It's up to the board, do you have any other thoughts, or any changes you'd like?
All?
No, 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 no more.
No, I'm off, thank you.
Darren?
Looks good.
Anybody for the audience, tiered site plan review? Seeing none, your motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt the planning board report recommendation for town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, so there goes our public hearings on the general business. Item A, review, report recommendation for PB 2524, amendment to the zoning map relative to the Towns McMinn district, adding live technology drive, removing two and six technology drives. Seen this, anybody got any discussion items on this, Bob?
So I think we've already closed this. Can we close this public hearing?
If you had any changes you wanted to the report and recommendation.
Any changes to the report?
No.
No.
So, motion to approve the report recommendation for PB 2523.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation for PB 2525, only zoning bylaw, regulate uses where they may be permitted by special permits. Then we've closed the hearing on this one. Is there a motion to approve the report recommendation?
Mr. Chair, these are quick friendly amendments, I think you said 2523, I'm analyzing 2524.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure the records.
Yep. So PB 2525, zoning and regulate uses, any discussion on this? Motion to adopt the planning board recommendation and report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And on to item C, concept plan review of section 8.10.12, the zoning bylaw, protected development, the McM bylaw, 219 Littleton Road, Westford Regency. Evening again, Attorney Robb.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from Freyland Robbins. Also with me tonight is my project team, Lizbeth Bello, I'm sorry, from Redgate, Katie Cruz from Hancock and Associates, she's the civil engineer, and Amy Cortez, she's just coming up now, she's from Arrow Street, she's the project architect. As you stated, we're here tonight for a conceptual pre-application proposal for the property, 219 Littleton Road. Everybody in this room knows the current use of the site is the Westford Regency. The proposal is to develop the site subject to the MBTA community's multifamily overlay district, better known as the McMinn. Redgate's already been here once before to review a very high-level conceptual proposal. I think the board was very clear in some of the things they wanted to see in a revised concept plan. They've been incorporated into a new concept plan, and that's what we're here to show you tonight. Some of the high-level things are that we're not seeking any special permits for this application, this will be site plan review. We tried to make sure that we complied with the affordable requirement, which is now, would be compliant with the McMinn bylaw. Tried to shift some of the parking away from Littleton Road. And also, and I think most importantly for this board, had tried to keep the historic Drew farmhouse. For any of you that have watched the online YouTube presentation about the history of the Drew farmhouse, I did watch it this week from Jeff Hall, there's a lot of information in there. We're calling it the Drew House, you're probably asking why? It's because it was actually built by George Drew. It's called a couple of other things in the application, you'll see that it has a sign out front. It was lived in by another Westford family in the late 1800s, but that's why we have it marked at the Drew House, just want anybody confused, because we already have a Drew farmhouse at 70 Boston Road. I think the best thing to do here is probably to turn over to Katie from Hancock Associates and just walk through the site just quickly, and then we can turn over to the architect to go through the conceptual plan.
Hi, good evening. About the existing conditions, this is an approximately 20-acre site. 10 acres of the site is currently developed. Other than the conference center and the house itself, the majority of the developed area is paved, so there's a lot of impervious area with currently very little provisions for stormwater management, water quality treatment, stormwater mitigation. You can actually go back up to the previous slide. The undeveloped area is either wooded, or there are three systems of wetlands. You can see on plan left of this image, there's a wetland system associated with Vine Brook, which runs in the north-south direction through the site. Also, kind of in the back upper-left corner of the Regency Conference Center, there's a pond labeled wetlands as well, that was originally constructed for, as a place for stormwater to gather. And then similarly, on plan right, there's another system of wetlands that was also originally for a discharge point for stormwater. The other thing I wanted to mention is there is an existing wastewater treatment facility on the site that serves the conference center. Right, that's that white dashed rectangle. The plan is to keep that and upgrade it as required to serve the proposed project.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to then turn over to Amy Cortez from Arrow Street, she's the architect. I'd just run through some of the other slides and what the conceptual plans would look like.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having us, if you can go to the next slide. So we were really inspired by the possibility of saving the house, sure. So we really wanted to keep the existing house on site. It has a great history, in addition to Drew's grandfather building it, it was the Burbex farmhouse. It also has a history to the Baker Chocolate Factory, who was the original landowner. And we think there's a lot of possibilities to make this into something that could give back to the community and potentially be a mixed use for the site. If you go to the next one. And so just some of the existing site photos, you know, the, we're keeping the existing driveway and the main entrance to the site, which is on the left, so the Vine Brook Farm and the existing house is on the right there. We know that there's some work that's going to be going on in Littleton Road, and so we're looking to coordinate with that in the master plan. Ideally, it'd be great to keep some of the stone walls, that's, I think, off of our property line right now, but find a way to preserve that, as well as some of the existing materials on the site. And there's actually quite a bit of grade change across the site, so from Littleton Road, which is a low point, the existing conference center sits at a high point, and a good portion of it is blocked by that historic house. And so we're using that to start to set up those view corridors into the site with the residential. If you go to the next one. So my partner was here previously, and he presented the site plan to you, and really, you know, the main takeaways we heard were really preserve the historic house, the parking being too visible from the street, which we had that center area of parking spaces, which is labeled 130 spaces, which, you know, we can't build on it because it's the existing septic field, but that was pulled towards Littleton Road and the street, and there was a total of 300 homes with 450 parking spaces. So we went back to the drawing board, and we looked at a couple of things. One was obviously, what can we do by preserving the house? If you go to the next page, please. As well as, how can we preserve some of those great, kind of existing groves of the trees that are at the top left of the site plan? And so the parking really has been designed to weave around those trees and provide parking into the backside of building A there. So the site is organized around two buildings. We've got an amenity space and an amenity building in the building A in that courtyard area. And we're looking to set up a couple of things with this. We had talked to Jeff and Joe early on about what residents in Westford were looking for in a diversity of housing, and really, you know, creating those flat units where you could park outside your unit and then walk into your unit directly. And so on all of the ground floors of these units, we're looking at how we can set up really kind of that outdoor front porch and stoop, so you could park your car, walk right into your unit, and it feels a bit more like a townhouse feel. And so we've only got four stories on the site, there's a real opportunity to create a walkable, you know, community that feels, I think it's a series of townhouses that are set up. And so we're in the middle of just starting our building design and how those buildings get articulated, so we know building A is looking very long. And so we're playing with the facades of that and how to break it up, and we've read your guidelines as well for the, for the community. There's a couple other things that we're looking at in terms of community connections, so on the far right and the bottom right of the site plan, that's basically a second fire truck access point into the site, but we're also looking at how we can design that to accommodate pedestrians and the connection over to the shopping that's off the page on the right, as well as the two bus stops. And then, basically facing the wetlands, we'll carve in a few more, you know, access points for pedestrians, but really it's looking at how those units can have private outdoor decks that face the wetland areas. We have a series of garages that you can park your car in and get screened, that will be basically up along 495. And also looking at putting in some outdoor space for the Drew House or the Burbex House, that potentially could accommodate some outdoor seating, and so we're looking at a number of uses there. If you go to the next slide, that probably explains the main points that we were just hitting on. So as I said, kind of looking at how we can have those single living, you know, walk-ups from the front of each, of each door. We're giving some landscape buffer with that as well. All the buildings will be designed, obviously exceeding the stretch code, all-electric. We've been doing this for a while with Redgate, and looking at Passive House as well. The open space will be increased from what currently is on-site, and so we're pulling back from the wetlands in a lot of those places and restoring it to nature. And then we're looking at, you know, is there an opportunity in the landscape and the outdoor amenities that we provide to really tell that story of Westford's farming history and to build up kind of a story around the site? There's a lot of great, great history there that we can play into. And then the site, more than a lot of sites that we work on, has this amazing connection to transit, and even the walkability to the stores next door. I stopped at Whole Foods before I came here, I mean, it's great, you see people walking along the road and the sidewalks that are already put in along Littleton Road, so it's impressive. And I think we can do a lot more to connect this back to the shops. If you go to the next one. Kind of reinforces the community. We're hoping there is a way to connect into some of the trails. We know we don't control that land, but we know we can provide those connections to the site. And potentially through the site, we'd love to create kind of a walking loop that people can use, residents can use. It's, becomes a really great amenity for a lot of our projects.
And I can just, I would like to stop here just for a second, because you know how much I love to talk about connectivity and sidewalks. So this site is already like key, right in the center of where there's a sidewalk system. So you can leave the Regency, go towards Cornerstone Square and be on a sidewalk. For anybody who's had the joy of driving down Boston Road for the last few months, you'll know, in the next couple of years, there will also be sidewalks going all the way down to Boston Road, right to Westford Center. So theoretically, you're going to be able to walk from Bos, from Westford Center all the way up to here, all the way to the Regency site, at 219 Littleton Road here, without going off of a sidewalk, which is amazing in Westford. Not only that, right now, you can leave the site, go to Cornerstone Square, safely cross the road, go into Liberty Way, and be into that trail system that we know goes all the way through and ends up on Powers Road. So there's already built-in connectivity here. I know that the town right now is working on the tip going down 110 to continue the sidewalk so we can get all the way down 110 to Powers Road. That's something, obviously, we'll explore as well, but I'm excited that this is kind of the key in the middle to try to get to the rest of the town, and already has some built-in pedestrian components here, which we haven't had on the other sites, and I'm sorry, I jumped on your slide, so go right ahead.
That's okay. We can go to the next one. Just some precedent images and what we love to create, either through the landscape and the architecture. I think there's a real opportunity for the upper-floor units to get these views into the mountains and the woods beyond. Obviously, the top middle photo is of the ski mountain. We're looking at how to really play up Westford's orchard history and both kind of the organization of the trees and different paths through it, and then creating these smaller rooms within the landscape. I think there's a real opportunity to create these smaller pockets of outdoor rooms that people can use. Obviously, spanning over the wetlands might be, you know, a push, but it'd be great if we could float something over there, just on the edge of it, to give people a different experience of nature, and then how nature changes with the seasons. If you go to the next one. And then some of the uses and the architecture, so we're really inspired by the barn and the farmhouse of the existing house. We think there's an opportunity here to create a different type of housing, one that reinterprets the, you know, the barn and the sloped roofs as a more modern farmhouse, which also gives, again, a greater diversity of housing. And so there's an opportunity where we could, for those top units, actually insert small, kind of loft areas, they could be used as a second bedroom, a den, and really to frame those views out to the mountains and to the, kind of the green beyond. So the image on the upper right was our inspiration for it, while also creating these really nice, you know, stoops and areas on the front porches that could be personalized for each resident. So, these are just some of the, some of the images, and then, you know, with the barn and that kind of middle one right there, you know, is there a way to kind of create the space that could extend out and be used for some outdoor dining and outdoor experiences like that? If you go to the next one. So this is the state of the existing farmhouse and the barn. The interior of the barn needs a little bit of TLC, but we think there's an opportunity to get rid of the vinyl siding, to bring it back, have a little bit more of the history present in this house, and it's just such a cute house that it'd be great to do something special with it. If you go to the next one. These are some of our early kind of concept ideas for, for the building, kind of in those two areas that Joe is circling, and as you can see, what we're doing is looking at how we can bring that sloped roof down to the fourth floor, so it starts to encapsulate kind of that top floor of the residential areas. But also, it reduces the scale and the height of the building through a sloped roof. And then treating the ground floor with a different type of material treatment that, again, breaks out in that scale vertically, and creates those moments of kind of entry and kind of privacy for those units. So each one of these, you know, basically is kind of a one-bedroom that fronts the, fronts the area of parking there, so you can pull in. You've got a little bit of a screen wall that hides the headlights of the parked cars, while also creating some privacy for those units and those decks. And we've designed these units in the buildings, so they're a little bit deeper than the typical double-loaded corridors, which, again, give you that privacy when you walk into your unit. And so we're still very much at the early stages. Jeff encouraged us to show these to you, just to get some feedback. But we do think there's a way to, you know, acknowledge the great kind of architectural history that Weston has, your buildings with these roofs, and not just do another kind of typical project with flat roofs. So we would love to try this. I went to Europe this summer, was really inspired by all the balconies in, you know, London, and you get these kind of elevated areas, and I think there's, there's, you don't always get this in the typical apartment buildings. And then the upper-left image shows like what we're hoping to get, you know, obviously this is two stories and very tall, but like the views to nature beyond, framing through those windows on the top. If you go to the next one, we just have one last page. And these are just kind of a closer view of the, you know, the front porches and the balconies, and so really using the balconies above, as well as the porches, and kind of these pushes and pulls and setbacks on the ground floor to create that variety and that diversity in the streetscape. on the ground floor to create that variety and that diversity in the streetscape. And so we'll continue to to work on this and get some more more of these moves in. And that's it.
So just a couple of points here. The nice thing about the site is that you don't have to imagine it. There's already four stories out here. So you don't, you can see exactly what the impact of the four stories will be. We already have parking street-side, which is generally not allowed in the McMod bylaw without a waiver. We tried to keep the parking over, you know, I'm directionally challenged, to the right-hand side of the existing historic building. So we tried to maintain that parking area so that really the view shed from Littleton Road could be maintained, keeping that historical house and keeping the house itself, obviously. You know, and I think the first question for the board is sloped roof. The bylaw specifically says that it's inclined not to like sloped roofs. We like the sloped roof here for many reasons, but really, we're trying to tie into this barn. I think that the bylaw was written without the with the sloped roofs excluded for fire safety issues. They generally don't like these sloped roof designs. But we're happy to go talk to the fire chief about it if this is a design that the board could support. I mean, so that's one thing I'd like to talk to the board about. Is this a concept that you like, the sloped roof? Do you not like it? You want us to move away from it? If it's something you'd like us to continue to explore, we're excited to explore it. We want to go talk to the fire chief about it next.
I would also, can I add?
Yeah.
We are designing this so it's sloped roofs, but there's a flat roof in the middle so we can put and screen all the mechanical equipment in the center of that building. So it's both screen from view from the street, which is actually much more difficult to do now with the all-electric buildings because those mechanical units sit up like five feet in the air. And so what we want to do is basically complete that sloped roof as it meets the edge of the building and then screen all the equipment on the inside.
Right. So it really serves the dual purpose of keeping the utilities masked in the center. We think there's safe and adequate access for the fire department. Would have to talk to them about it. But again, if this board's not inclined to allow for sloped roof, we obviously have to go on a different route, so we would like to talk to the board about that. We've just gone through this with thirty-seven Powers Road, so I know you're thinking the same thing. I'm thinking when you look at the at this plan, what about the streets? What about the blocks? What about the articulation? And I know we didn't do this for the last application, but I was thinking maybe even at this point in the conceptual, perhaps we do a small contract with Dodson and Flinker at this point and enter into a review at the conceptual level, just to have them review this for what they think our big-level McMod waivers will be. I think they're going to be what I just said that they will be, but just to make sure that we can flesh those out with the board conceptually so that we can get a little bit of direction before we go to design on the McMod relief we'll be looking for as part of site plan review. Just a suggestion for the board, something we're happy to carry forward if the board's inclined to do it. We're, I think we've given you enough information. I've talked enough. So we're all here to answer your questions. We'd love to hear your initial comments.
Great. Thank you very much. Bob, I'll start with you.
I guess the first question I have is, I didn't see any list of waivers. Do you have an estimate of any waivers being required with this plan?
No, but I think the big ones will be what I mentioned. Okay? So the the length of the buildings obviously are longer than the articulation allows. So this, these buildings are slightly longer. Obviously, we can meet the some of the jogs, but the articulation, we would need a similar waiver. The blocks are going to be what they are when we set from the street, so that'd be something we could talk to Dodson and Flinker about, what we think our street is and that our compliance with those block models. So we think that we'll probably need a block waiver. And depending on where those blocks are, we might need a setback waiver as well. I'm sure the one that you're looking at as well is our parking because we have parking kind of all, you know, the front and the side of the buildings. We have the perpendicular parking in front of the buildings along Building A and in front of Building B. But if the road, our double-access road from Littleton Road is considered our street, then those may be in compliance. And I think this is something we can talk to Dodson and Flinker about and really flesh out. And and just to your point, I think this is why it's a good idea even to do a small review at this point with Dodson and Flinker, just so that we can answer those questions and make sure we're on the same page moving forward. And then the board can seriously consider at the conceptual level, you know, we're comfortable with these waivers. We like this component. You should go forward with this design or not. And we can go down a different design route before we actually get into the meat of the plans.
So you kind of hit upon my second question, which has to do with the double-access road. And you, today's access has another access driveway approximately where the number three is. And I'm just want to get some input if engineering believes this meets the the intent of the bylaw, because I'm very concerned about an accident at right at that entrance that blocks that. We generally like to have two means of access to any property that has more than ten dwelling units, I believe. And so that's, even if even if it's a gated one, but but something, somewhere of some distance away from that, just in the event there is a serious accident there blocking emergency access into the site.
Right. And we we will have to talk, again, I haven't met with the chief yet, not about interior circulation, not about the sloped roof, so he will have to look at this boulevard at entrance.
Right.
We are suggesting all the way towards number seven, you know, a separate emergency access entrance. So there is an alternative access design there for a secondary means of access for emergency equipment only. So we'd really need to still vet this through with with the fire department to make sure that that's safe and adequate, to your point.
And and that also has to do with that, just that whole main boulevard. I'm concerned about the turning radius for the large trucks.
Yes.
It looks very tight there to get into the property. It also dead-ends there on either end of Building A. And so there is going to be some concern, I think, with fire and safety about access to the the rear of that building and the the side of the building. So that's, and then one other question we had at the last meeting was working out any kinds of access for other services to the adjoining shopping center, because we had we had asked about if there's going to be any kind of mixed use on the parcel.
We did look at that. There's a vernal pool in the upper right on the shopping center's site that we can't go near. And then looking at the quality of that shopping center, the only place we'd be able to probably pull connections from is a little bit north of the number seven.
Yeah.
There's about six to eight feet of grade change. I was actually just looking at it tonight. So it's possible you could do like steps up. It wouldn't be accessible, but it would be a nice shortcut for people to come in. It's a little, it's unfortunate it's right by their dumpsters, but I feel like we could probably, if that property owner allowed, it would be nice to kind of walk directly up rather than having to weave around and on the ramp on Littleton Road.
Bob, what are your thoughts on the gable roofs?
I'm just going to get to that next. I like the shape of the buildings. What I'm a little distressed about, I guess, is the ultra-modern look. And just wondering if they could add a few more colonial elements in there, either be, you know, between the eaves, the overhangs on the end. This this reminds me of what they now build in Germany is what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
And I just, I'm not, and it it takes the size and ratio from Vinebrook Farm Buildings, but it doesn't share a lot of the other colonial architectural elements. And it looks like this new black-and-white style. We see all the rage in the architecture magazines. And I guess if it's something that mass, I'd like to see something that fits into the character of the town. Kind of what happened with the Chili's building when they they moved the Reed Barn, it incorporated some pretty significant aspects of the Reed Barn colonial design concepts. So that's my one thought. The other thing I noticed on this is I like some of the interior elevations you showed here with the use of natural wood. It would be nice if that carried to the outside a little bit, maybe to colonialize the outside of the structure, but that's my preliminary discussion.
All good feedback. I think we definitely recognize that the buildings are not going to be all black and white. That would be incredibly monotonous around the entire site. And so we're looking to diversify the the materials on the outside.
Yeah.
We did try one and are looking at at some with more natural wood, and I think especially down by the entryways. You can't quite see it. It's reading a little black down here. So we are exploring that. What I would say, we can look at the a few more architectural details. I know these are reading really stark right now. I would hesitate on trying to copy so much of the colonial architecture onto here, because I think when you blow it up at the scale of four stories, it reads as this pastiche should vary, not not a great feeling. But that said, we can definitely look at, like, what are those those details that add scale and add the quality and the craft that is really critical to to fitting in with the neighborhood, so.
And the last thing I'll say, I mean, Melissa's familiar with our last development we just discussed with, and discussions we had about a month, month and a half ago, regarding the fenestration on the faces. And I I'm not sure this meets the fenestration intent fully, because all it does is have the the bump out for the balconies. That's it. So fenestration, as per the bylaw, is something we'll need, I guess, Dodson to look at.
Are you talking about the no greater than a hundred square feet fenestration?
Yeah.
Yeah, which I think we do need to look at as it relates to the energy code, because we try to, in order to meet the Passive House and electric, all-electric buildings, typically you don't do any more than twenty-five to, I think, thirty percent of the windows. And so that's what we do have to measure. And I do, it was something I flagged before this meeting, because we'll probably, if each floor is ten foot eight, that means we can't have windows that are farther than nine point two-five feet apart, which is actually quite low for some of the, our two-bedroom is thirty-four feet wide. So we just need to make that right balance, but yeah.
That's it for me for now.
Thanks, Bob. Julie?
Okay. I will say that I do really like sloped roofs. I think I think it adds a lot, and I think it does carry the character of the farmhouse. I think it's a great idea. Like what Bob said and what Melissa has pointed out, I'm very concerned about the block. I'm very concerned about the overall length of the building. I do agree, it looks a little too modern for Westford, so hopefully something can be done with that. I don't really, I, the sense of main entrance, I see it well on Building B. I don't see it well on Building A, because to me, there's the little bump out in the pavement, but it like walks into the pool. So it seems like it's missing this sense of...
Totally agree. That's not designed, Joe.
Yeah, okay. Main entrance. Okay, good. Good. Also was concerned about, obviously, fire truck access and even that that parking. I know you're reutilizing the the lot that's currently there, but concerned that we do need two access points to this, to this, especially this number of of units. I can't imagine only one entrance and exit. Visitor parking, I think that's pretty much it. Oh, bedroom mix. What are you looking at for bedroom mix?
It's about, so we're looking at about fifty percent one-bedrooms and then forty percent two-beds and about ten percent three-beds at this point.
Okay. Because obviously, there is a need for the the bigger three-bed units and, you know, for families. So if there's any way we can maybe work that, that would be great. So that's about it. Thank you.
Great. Bill?
Many comments in common with my colleagues, a few, I guess, differences. First, on the sloped roofs, I have no problem with it. I think it's a it's a nice look, as long as a fire doesn't have any issue with that. I guess I disagree with my colleagues. I kind of like the modern look. I think it's actually quite nice. I'm not, I'm not sure that we should be trying to recreate everything we know all the time, so I potentially like, I like the way that we designed it. Looking at the layout of the parking, I have some concerns with site circulation, which Bob articulated. I have some questions about where you would actually move snow in bad weather, because the parking looks so packed in that I'm like, I don't actually know where you would move the snow, given like how many parking spaces there are. At one point six-six, personally, I would be willing to consider a reduction to parking. I think unlike the thirty-seven Powers Road Castle, this is much more walkable to get to like everyday things that you need. And the access to Larda means that it actually, I think, fits more easily into like what McMod is supposed to do, which is allow people to have fewer vehicles and still get to like where they go to work every day. So, you know, for me, I would be willing to consider a reduction on parking, especially if it lets you break up Building A, which I agree with my colleagues, that's a really, really big building. I think B is similarly big, but the way that it's laid out is going to like mask that size better than Building A. I don't, I, not that I'm an architect, so what do I know? But if you split the Building A on that diagonal jog and you were to turn and you took away some of that parking that sort of is like northwest or northeast, I'm sorry, of that wetland area, to jog part of the building around and then had a, just had three buildings get to the same count, but like don't have one massive structure, have two smaller structures in the back, like, I don't know, maybe think about something like that or, but I just think you're going to have a very hard time with the mass and scale of Building A, the way that that's laid out. It's just going to be visually like huge, right? So, I mean, I think those are my preliminary comments.
Jeff?
Yep. I have no issue with the sloped roof. I think it's a welcome change, but I agree with Dylan there. I think Building A, if you could make that somehow, split that and maybe even incorporate the kind of boulevard feel we're looking for with the McMod, that might help you do that. You can come in and maybe have that be your sort of block in there. That might be something to consider. Yeah, style-wise, I'm not opposed to it, but it looked okay with me. I, like I said, I like the, I prefer that roof than just a bunch of flats.
Jeff, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you didn't chime in yet.
Okay.
You didn't chime in with your comments yet.
No, yeah. So I agree with my colleagues. I'm okay with the difference in the in the roofs.
Listening to Dylan, I have one additional that none of us touched on, and that's traffic. This, while it's, what, sixty percent of the other project, the existing traffic on Littleton Road is much greater than on Powers Road. So I think it's, this one feels like it needs a traffic light.
I think, yeah.
And so I think we're going to really need to look at that and have our, the traffic consultant look at that seriously. And that's going to also affect, I think, how we design the primary and a secondary entrance, especially in terms of if it's a secondary entrance. It's there for emergency reasons in my mind, first and foremost, but it may get used, depending whether it's gated or not. And so it's probably going to have to be one way in, one way out, such as right turn in and right turn coming out, because I I really think we're going to have a traffic light at this one, just because of the amount of traffic on Littleton Road.
Right. And that's down the road.
And that that's down the road, and this one will have to get factored in to the pedestrian Route one-ten reconfiguration study, because right now, the the widening of the lanes stop, I think, right about the Drew House is where
Yeah.
it goes from two lanes down to one lane. So this is all going to have to get factored in somehow with the redesign of one-ten. All right, sorry.
Yep, okay. So, yeah, I'm okay with the the gable roofs. You know, I think I'd like to see something else besides the box. I agree with Building A. I'd love to see these broken up into smaller buildings somehow, if possible. But other than that, it's a structural, it's a point of business to work on. More to that?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So first of all, I did have a direct conversation with fire chief. He's certainly open to having a conversation, you know, with the applicant to see if there are any options other than a flat roof. You know, they're certainly open to having those conversations. And they're obviously going to take a look at site circulation issues and emergency access. So they're going to, you know, obviously get that. I will say, I do agree. I think it is a good idea in this case, I, for this site, which is so visible. I think everyone would benefit from having some review of bylaw compliance, looking at, you know, the blocks, the ways, the articulation. So I think that's going to, you know, be a big topic, and I think the sooner we get to it, I think that's better for everyone. I do believe there will be some additional waivers that might not be on folks' radar yet. Simply retaining the Drew House is going to result in a need for additional waivers, because, you know, you'll be having, even though it's an existing structure, it's still a structure that doesn't, you know, meet those setbacks once it becomes, you know, the multifamily. And, you know, I think that direction was clearly given by this board, you know, keep that structure. And I think it'll be important to maybe separate, you know, that may result in the need for other waivers, you know, like if they didn't have, if they weren't trying to retain that structure, it'd be nice for the board to know what impact that has on the need for waivers, like separate what is there because of the the Drew House versus just the site. waivers, like separate what is there because of the Drew House versus just the site itself. I think that would be good information. I think the earlier we can get some of this information, I think it would be, I think it would be great. And I think it would be very good to have a firmer grasp of, of the waivers. So I think that would be good for everyone and make it more efficient. So I think it does make sense to get input from the fire chief. It might take more than one conversation, I don't know, but then maybe have benefit of that so the board could say, and of course, it's non-binding at this stage, but the board could say, okay, if the chief is good with this and you're good with the sloped roof, then, you know, that's, that's a big deal. They could then start to look at the building placement and the block and ways, I think, and the parking. Some of the parking waivers might be, well be affected though by retaining that Drew House, I'm not sure. So I think it just puts everyone in a better place if we at least attack some of that earlier this time around, so.
So do we want to talk about employing the consultant at this point?
I think it would be great if the board would entertain, you know, that vote to authorize town staff to set up a 53G account to do the bylaw compliance review.
And we'd be happy to do it at this level. I think it'll actually iron things out from the get-go so the board and the applicant can understand what relief that they need to get from a high level. Not talking about going through subdivision or full design waivers, but really just the big waivers.
Right.
Yeah.
So somebody want to make that noise?
I'll make the motion that we ask them to engage Bruce Dodson and Flinker at this early stage and set up whatever needs to be set up.
The 53G?
53.
Second.
All the affairs, aye?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Anything else you want to hear from us?
No, I think you gave us great feedback. We look forward to looking, to working with Dodson and Flinker and once we work through a couple of those issues, we'll come back again with our conceptual before we go to a full design. Thank you again for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know it's not a public hearing, but I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's true. Anybody, any other comments, questions, Bob? All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, review of minutes, so we have minutes in the package. And we do have, of course, we have the warrant. Want to discuss the warrant?
I don't think there's any warrant articles that you would otherwise typically weigh in on. You already provided your recommendation to the select board for D-Donato Drive. Bob would want to include it, just in the event you had any comments on any of the other articles. If not, that's fine.
Motion for adjourned?
Some moved.
Second.
All the affairs, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you all. So I, I liked the architecture, I just didn't think it was good.